Back from a tour of the Camrio Sanitary Water Reclamation Facility. An excellent tour. I have a feeling there may be board members who want to make a few comments, but that will come later. Do I have any public comments at all? All right. We have items A through G respectively on the consent calendar.
Move the approval.
All right. I hear a motion and a second and discussion. Please vote. And that will be reflected as a 5-0 vote to approve the consent calendar. Are there any departmental items? Any items from legal counsel?
No.
Any comments from staff? Any comments from directors for Camrio Sanitary in the tour we just did? Mrs. Craven.
I thought it was a very good tour. Our plant looks very good. It's in good shape. It's working very well, and it was very informative. Thank you. And thanks to Mr. Klotzel for his narration, and I'm sure he has a sore throat after talking for 90 minutes or so.
Just two quick observations having represented... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Kilday?
Do you want me to go first?
No, you go first.
Just kind of quick, yeah, and it was interesting how much of the property is dedicated to the drying beds. I know I had a conversation with Dave about that, and a lot of it has to do with the weather, too, about how hot it gets, so maybe there's some things we can do down, you know, in the future with that, but it looks like as far as the drying beds, drying beds that we've got, we've got to be able to maintain what we have right now. So, but it is. What Mrs. Craven said, it's in very good shape. It looks like it's functioning very well. And, yeah, good job to all the employees there as well.
I just want to make a couple of comments. I want to echo. Thank you to Mr. Klotzel. Thank you to Public Works staff, having represented sanitary districts and sewerage agencies for over 30 years. The plant is in excellent shape. It's well cared for. What people may not realize is it processes about 3.5 million gallons per day. I'm going to lapse into MGD, but million gallons per day, and about 2.5 million gallons per day is used as recycled water, which is extremely important. So, there are a lot of good things that are going on, even at a sewer treatment plant, actually at a water reclamation facility.
That's right.
And we will... That's right.
Follow what it is.
Tony, I have one question.
That's right.
One question. One of the things I haven't been able to ask, I'd like to find out. We have that sludge that we ship off, okay? We call it sludge. It's good stuff, though. Have we talked to Harrison's grow mulch? No, what's it called?
Aggrum.
Aggrum. Have we talked about Aggrum allowing them to have that, that way we don't have to haul it off? Because they use that stuff.
Right. That actually has been identified in the early steps of our treatment plant processes through this energy management plan and part of the biosolids handling. We will continue to look at those options as we move forward.
I've been asking for this for years. Can we talk to them? Can we talk to them? Then we don't have to ship it off. They come pick it up free because it's not industrial type sludge. It's highly qualified sludge.
Well, it's actually, it's actually Class B biosolids, and so we have to be, we... The district has to be careful under its MPDS permit to dispose of a Class B biosolid properly. That said, you know, I understand the bigger issue.
I think we need to look at it. This way we can cut some costs, too.
Okay. No other comments from board members? We will adjourn.
I will reconvene this meeting of the Camrio City Council. We did return from a tour for the city council of the former courthouse, which had previously been a redevelopment district property. And at this time, I'd like the record to reflect that now all council members are present. We've already identified that there's one change to the agenda. Item C in the consent calendar is being removed today and moved to the next council meeting. And so with that, we will have a presentation on Coastal Cleanup Day, September 15th.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Craven, and council members. With our current vacancy in the stormwater management position, Mr. Mike Smith with Charles Abbott and Associates will be giving this presentation. He has been keeping our stormwater program going as we fill that vacancy, along with the Stormwater Assistant Jessica Reynolds is here tonight, and they will be making tonight's presentation.
It takes two of them to fill her shoes.
Very big shoes to fill.
Thank you, Mr. Klotzel, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having us tonight to talk about the Coastal Cleanup Day that's coming up Saturday, September 15th. The event is going to take place from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Last year, between the two locations that we have within the city, Mission Oaks Bronca and Cuyahoga Creek, we removed quite a bit of trash, but I want to kind of draw your attention to the number of volunteers that we had at Cuyahoga Creek and the amount of trash that we removed versus the Mission Oaks Bronca, at 171 volunteers and 145 pounds of trash. So, we are trying to encourage more support down at the Cuyahoga Creek location.
You did a good job.
Throughout the five-year history, we have removed less and less trash as we've gone through the years. That's a good sign, and I think it's a good sign of the public outreach that the state, Don't Trash California, has done, and I think it's a good trend. Last year, we had 3,388 volunteers remove 14,013 pounds of trash in the county. In California, we had 66,535 volunteers remove 800 and almost 40,000 pounds of trash along 2,422 miles. In the United States, across the country, we had 209,000 volunteers remove almost 4 million pounds of trash from 12,000 miles. So, worldwide, it takes us... Now, the one thing I want to mention to the council is this is a worldwide day. This is not just Ventura County. This is not just California. This is not just the United States. This is a worldwide day. So, 789,138 volunteers removed 20 million pounds of trash from 18,935 miles. That's a pretty big number.
I think we need to point out that worldwide cigarette butts are the top thing that people pick up.
Right. Absolutely. And it has been a number-one item for us as well. One thing I did want to draw the council's attention to is the plastic grocery bags. That used to be in our top three. Now it is down to number 10. So, cigarette butts, food wrappers, plastic beverage bottles, plastic bottle caps, and it's unfortunate people don't, when they do use a plastic bottle, do not recap that before they throw it away. That's unfortunate. And then number five still is plastic grocery bags, but we don't have that problem as much here in California anymore since the ban. Other plastic bags, straws, another hot topic, number seven, and plastic takeout containers. A lot of them are styrofoam, and plastic lids, and then more takeaway containers. So, we have three locations. However, two are within the city. We have the main canyon off of Mission Oaks Park and Cuyahoga Creek, which we are encouraging more volunteers to come, and I think that's, Cuyahoga Creek is where we're going to have the biggest impact with help. And then there is another location very close to the city in Beardsley Wash that is actually managed by the county, but we might have some residents that, for example, in the Spanish Hills area, that would prefer to go to that location as being closer. But again, we're really encouraging Cuyahoga Creek because I think we can make the biggest impact in that. And then a few notes. All the sites, all the cleanup sites, Cliff Bars and Water are being provided. Cliff Bars are one of our event sponsors specifically for Ventura County, and they have donated Cliff Bars to the volunteers for this event, so there will be snacks available. And we're encouraging volunteers to bring their own reusable plastic water bottles, or not water bottles, reusable water bottles. However, plastic water bottles will be provided in our Cuyahoga Creek location. Eglue coolers and cups will be provided at the Mission Oaks Bronca location. And the city's website has been updated to reflect this year's event, along with a credible waiver. We're asking everybody to, that participates at home in advance, to go onto the city's website, print out the waiver, fill it out, and bring it. And then giveaways this year. We're giving t-shirts away as usual, along with reusable metal straws, and those are being provided by the county.
So, tell people exactly where they go in order to, you know, where do you show up on Saturday morning?
Let me move that back. At the Mission Oaks Park, we meet at the Oak Canyon Mission Oaks Boulevard near the tennis courts. And then the Cuyahoga Creek location, we meet at Creekside at Paso del Campo at the bottom of the slope at the entrance to the creek bottom.
Down there where that little thing for, you can go, but it's blocked off. That's where we always meet.
Right. Same location. We haven't changed anything. And then the county location at Beardsley Wash is meet at the corner of Beardsley Road and Wright Road.
Your Honor?
Yes.
One question. I've done this several times, but the tough one is Cuyahoga Creek.
Yes, it is.
Not only are you going to get exercise walking through sand, because you are, but if it's warm, it's hot because the sand just brings it in there that much more. But it was worthwhile. It just, I think you're going to get your exercise when you go down because you are on that one. All right. The other one I want to ask about, all those fields of plastic that they have out in the ocean, you know, off Alaska, maybe if you get those guys to be part of your day, you'd have tons more.
Yeah.
That's all, Your Honor.
Mrs. McDonald. Bring your own gloves or gloves provided?
Gloves will be provided, but you can also bring your own.
Right.
We're going to encourage people to bring their own gloves, but, yeah, we will have that, just in case people have forgotten.
Wear shorts.
And don't forget to put on sunscreen.
Yes.
Because it's supposed to warm up.
Yes, it is.
Wear shorts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the consent calendar, but before we get to a motion, we have one person who'd like to speak to us on two items. Barbara Williams. As she's coming up, I have other people who want to speak on other items. I know Barbara knows what our requirements or our rules are for public speaking, public comments, but we, the limit is three minutes. The clock, you can see here, and I can see a clock, they count down. When you get to, when they've counted down two minutes and there's one minute remaining, a light will turn yellow and you'll hear a sound, and then we ask you to finish up in the next minute. And what Stan Daley used to say is that that, the trapdoor's open and down you go. She's looking. Okay, so, thank you. Barbara Williams.
I fully expect those residents of Camrio that receive their water from the city of Camrio want the city to use water money wisely and prudently and don't want extravagance when simplicity will do. If I were in the Camrio Water District, I would find it disturbing that the estimated cost of the desalter has gone from $30 million to $54 million with only $15 million in grant money, according to the Acorn on August 31st. They're going to make it look like the library. City Council, you're not building the Taj Mahal, and it doesn't have to look like the library. It's an industrial site. I had a discussion with Camrosa, my water provider, and while the city's desalter is larger, the Camrosa desalter costs $9 million in grant money and has been in place since 2014. According to the Acorn, the city may be borrowing from the general fund for the city's desalter. This project has been discussed for years and has increased in cost 47% because of the city's inability to get it done expeditiously like Camrosa. I do not like my tax money being loaned to a project that does not benefit the whole city and does not benefit us orphans in Camrio Springs. By the way, Camrio Springs Road is getting worse and worse, Mike. I hear from a good source, the desalter project is going to impact the Las Poses Berry's strawberry stand. When deciding on a site, it appeared the location and egress from Somas Road was north of the berry stand and the home on the Nishimori property. That strawberry stand is an institution in our area. It brings in customers from all over Southern California and old customers from other states for the best strawberries around. Their stand and parking lot is in an area that is safe to get to and from both directions, and the current parking lot allows the customers to get in and out safely. There is no reason you should be impacting the strawberry stand, its parking lot, or the ability to get the berries and other produce to the stand. It was there well before the city even decided to build a desalter, and because there were issues being too close to the school and homes, they moved it to agricultural land. Do not touch the strawberry stand or its parking lot. Maybe it's time to downscope the project to live within the grant money that is available, which is 67% more than the cost of Camrosa's desalter. It does not have to look like the library. I highly recommend you get Camrosa to provide some consultation and give advice on what is needed to get the job done. If Camrosa can do it, so can the city. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like Public Works Director Klotzel to address the strawberry stand issue.
Yes, thank you. The strawberry stand will be temporarily relocated, as previously mentioned to City Council at the study session prior meeting, and it will be relocated back in a very similar location, utilizing the same parking lot, same access. So, when the project is all set, it will be relocated back in full use as it is today.
And they are not going to miss any strawberry season?
No.
That's correct. There's provisions to relocate it temporarily, more than likely to a spot north of the existing location, utilizing the same access as what's anticipated, and so it will be open during all strawberry seasons during the plant construction.
All right.
Additionally, we have been saving up money in the water fund from the city water customers to address the city's share.
That's correct.
Okay. We don't usually answer things, but I think it was important.
Yes, but there are a couple have to be answered. Number one, the Camrosa plant serves 7% of their area. 7%. This will serve 71% of our water for this area over here, so definitely it's going to be bigger. We're not going to take any of the strawberry fields away. Every council member here made it clear, we didn't want those strawberry fields to disappear, so they won't. They'll still be there.
Okay. We are now at the consent calendar. We've heard two comments, or comments on two items.
I'll move the approval of consent, less item C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item C, which has been moved to the September 26th meeting. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Move this down to City Council. Item A, Citizen Appointment Committee Recommendation.
Yes, this item is to fill an unscheduled vacancy on the ranch board, and the Citizen Appointment Committee did meet and reviewed an application for the position, and their recommendation is to appoint as indicated in the agenda report. And I defer to them if they have any comments on that process.
Any comments? The name of the person is Matt Kohagen.
Yeah, I'll make a comment. I've known Matthew for many, many years. His father, Bill Kohagen, was very active in town, and I know Matt is very eager to serve, and I think he'll be an outstanding member of this board. And I know Mr. Tremblay and I, along with the city clerk, vetted his qualifications, and the feeling was that he had the qualifications for this position.
Your Honor?
Mr. Tremblay?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
I also know, I think Matt will be an excellent candidate for this. I know him and his father, too, from before.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, second with a comment. I would agree, and it's so nice to see the next generation getting involved, and I think that's what we need. Good place to start. Okay. Any other comments? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. City Attorney, update on the former fire station?
Yes. As you've indicated, this is an update regarding the former fire station and the discussions between the city and St. Mary Magdalene Church with respect to that former fire station site. The city has been recently advised by the church that the use of the former fire station for church offices, which is what they originally were hoping for, is not financially feasible nor responsible. The church has retained structural engineers and contractors to provide estimates with respect to the cost for the repairs and build out of the former fire station for offices, and that cost estimate came in at $882,000. We had that estimate reviewed by Sean Leonard, and he concurred that that is within the range of what it would cost to repair and build out that site. In addition, there would be hardscaping expenses of approximately $581,000, and then a contingency of 15% would be $219,000. All this adds up to the sum of $1.6 million. The church has indicated that because of that expense, that it is not financially feasible for them to proceed with the acquisition of that site and the construction of, and repair of, the existing building. What the church has requested is that the council consider an alternative use for that site rather than offices, and that would be a gymnasium that would be available for use by the St. Mary Magdalene School students. If there were to be a gymnasium there, there would necessarily need to be a demolition of the existing building and then the construction of the gymnasium on the property. So, in order for the city to evaluate the possible use of that site as a gymnasium, the church has indicated that they will be able to provide additional information regarding the proposed gymnasium. The church has retained the firm of Main Street Associates and has advised us that by mid-November, they would be able to submit to the city further information about the proposed gymnasium. That would include a site plan that would have parking, access, building dimensions, and a setback from Ventura Boulevard. It would also include a rough architectural elevation of the building in relation to the existing structures on their campus in keeping with the Old Town Development Plan. And finally, it would include a description of the anticipated uses of the building in terms of what would be included within the gymnasium. So, the suggested action this evening would be to authorize the city manager to obtain further information from the church no later than November 15th of 2018 regarding the proposed museum, so the city council can evaluate the church's new request. I do know that Principal Michael Ronan is here this evening, and I understand he's available to answer questions and provide any additional comments. And I am available for questions now if you have.
Are there questions? Mr. Kilday?
Yeah. Brian, would that also include any kind of a landscape plan as well?
I'm assuming so, but perhaps Mr. Ronan would indicate what their plans are, but I'm, it's my assumption that there would be some landscaping involved. The information that we would expect by mid-November is not going to be the detailed kind of plans that would be construction-ready, but would give certainly more information than just the concept of a gymnasium, and that's kind of the purpose of this effort.
Okay.
Other questions? We have public speakers, but I'll take questions first. Okay, no other questions. Michael Ronan?
I think our city attorney pretty well summarized what I was going to say, but just for the sake of having on the record, and I'll go quickly so I don't fall through the trapdoor. I appreciate the invitation, the opportunity tonight to speak to Mayor Craven, our city council. It's been such a pleasure also to work with the great city staff we here at Camrio. I'm here tonight, obviously, as principal at St. Mary Magdalene School, but speak really on the behalf of our entire parish community. I'm sure you've read through the reports or have that at your disposal, but I briefly wanted to summarize some of our efforts over the past 10 months to give you a bit of history, as well as to give you a glimpse of what we hope to have happen. We have invested time, energy, in both human and financial resources towards completing our due diligence on the former fire station building. When we were given permission to start this process, our goal was to repurpose the property into future office space to be used by our various parish personnel and ministries. We worked with a variety of local vendors who have done a tremendous job in assisting the parish to gather as much information as possible on the condition and future uses of the building. We engaged Main Street architects and planners for space planning. One of their first tasks was involved creating an accurate set of plans for the building, since these then exist at the time that we began the process. They also assisted with evaluating the existing footprint of the building and completing a test fit for our new uses. RGSE Structural Engineers completed a structural Tier 1 evaluation of the building, which included a study of the unique building system used in the original construction. Scarlet's Landscaping helped to evaluate hardscape and landscape solutions for the property. Home BioTesting completed a thorough asbestos inspection of the interior and exterior of the building. And finally, Parker Brown Construction provided estimates for necessary construction and remodeling costs. At this point, the overall cost to improve the former fire station property is approximately $1,675,000. Due to the age of the existing improvements, our structural engineers are also concerned with the walls that are comprised of a system not currently acknowledged in the building code. Facing an already large construction cost, as well as the unknowns of the building construction, we have deemed it neither fiscally reasonable nor responsible to move forward on this path. While we are disappointed, we are not willing to give up on finding a solution that will benefit the parish, but also allow the city to finally close the chapter on this property. We are requesting that you authorize our city manager to continue with, to work with St. Mary Magdalene Parish to formalize our alternate plan to construct a new gymnasium on this site. We look forward to continuing to work with Main Street architects and planners to design a building that fits into the overall plan of Old Town, complements our beautiful Hilltop Chapel, and creates a synergy between the new space and Distar Park. We look forward to presenting a site plan, including parking and access, a building plan, including dimensions and uses, as well as an architectural rendering of our proposed building. We will be able to present those to city staff by the middle of November at the latest. As both principal at St. Mary Magdalene School and a citizen of Camrio, I can see this as an opportunity for us to work together to help the children of our parish while also doing something that is good for Camrio as a whole. Thank you very much.
Question, Your Honor?
Mr. Morgan?
This is kind of a joke, but it's not. If you, if this were to go forward and the gymnasium was built there, would you consider having some senior basketball leagues there?
You know, I don't know if I could speak to that quite yet, as obviously there'd be liabilities, issues that we would need to discuss with the archdiocese.
But you'd consider, huh? Okay. Thanks.
Okay. First, it has to get approved.
Yeah. We'll build it first, then we'll figure out who's going to be.
I think that's why I said, if this goes forward.
Mrs. McDonald. Can you tell me, process-wise, we don't have to go all the way back to the beginning with the archdiocese and so forth. We can kind of pick up where we are and not have another year?
No, we've kept them kind of abreast as we're moving along, so these current steps we've done kind of with them in our...
So, they've already given approval for the concept of that, and then the funding's in place in order to be able to do it?
Well, certainly, you know, if you're looking at building a gymnasium, you know, that would involve a capital campaign, but we're confident that we would be able to raise the money. So, you know, I'm not sitting on a giant pile of dollar bills, but we're confident we'd be able to raise the money, too.
Any idea in a timeframe and what you see to be realistic if you did get approval fairly quickly?
You know, I don't know if I'd be comfortable commenting on that.
Not there yet either.
Yeah. Yeah. I think right now, it's just even permission to explore that is an option.
I guess the concern, we'd have, obviously, the history here. We seem to go down a path and never seem to get to that end, so we want to find something that will take us there and take us there quickly, but done well, obviously.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think I was still in grade school when this all started, so I'm happy to be there. You know, I think in every step of the way, again, like I've said, we've had good communication with city staff, and we've moved forward. And obviously, it's taken, you know, longer than anybody would like, but I do see as making forward progress.
And sometimes good things come out of waiting, so maybe it was what was meant to be here.
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
No, I'll wait.
Okay. Oh, you have a question?
I'll wait for a comment. Thank you.
Okay, we have another speaker. Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker is Matt Lorimer. Oh, sorry, Matthew Lorimer. You change your name all the time, don't you?
Change is good. You know, I've lived in this community a lot of years. We've talked about this for many years. The four of you, except for Mr. Tremblay, you bought this property because you wanted a restaurant, okay? The question is, why didn't the city have a protocol in place to, every year, take pitches, and if there was water damage, break-ins, whatever it is, why wasn't it dealt with? This building was bought as a piece of history. The idea is, this pitch was supposed to be office buildings. Now, they want to tear it down. Let me remind you, you should always get a second opinion. You don't have a surgeon cut you up without a second opinion. A second opinion is warranted. You had a responsibility to maintain this property, and it wasn't maintained, and it's in the condition it is. So, therefore, do we write it off the books of history? You can't replace something that's been around. And by the way, there are firefighters who gave their lives for years in this community, okay? So, what you're saying is, throw that out the window. That's not what was purposeized for that building. It was going to be a restaurant. It was supposed to be saved. Now we're here and it needs to be torn down. That's unacceptable. And let me remind you, this city council paid for a study session with the park district, and you know what they said? We need a gymnasium. I think the city should basically turn the property over to the park district, and what they should do is build a gymnasium. They should call it the Firehouse Gymnasium. This property can benefit the children of this community. What you're talking about now here is putting it in private hands. You called for a study session. You're, that session between the park district and you said there was a need assessment for a gymnasium. Are you going to turn it over to private enterprise? This agreement was to renovate that building so it can be offices. Now we're talking about tearing it down. Now we're talking about tearing it down. So now we have a problem, because that's not what was said. I think it's important, you have two decisions here tonight. One is get a second opinion. Is it worth tearing down a piece of history, or do we put a price tag on it? Do we throw away something because it costs a little too much money? The second thing is, if you decide to make it a gymnasium, should it go in private hands or should it go to the Park District, and maybe the city should build a gymnasium to meet all the citizens' needs of this community? This city is important. You need a senior center, but you need a gymnasium. Your study session you paid for gave you that reason. So the question is, again, should that gymnasium be built and should be for public use? And also, I think it should be called the Firehouse Gymnasium. All the firefighters who've been in this city who gave their lives, who've made a difference between a heart attack, a fire, it should carry that name for life, okay? It should carry the name, Firefighter Gymnasium, in support of the firefighters who gave their lives. It's very important you make a good decision. Think about what has occurred. Thank you.
So just to clarify, we're not making a decision on whether it's going to be a gymnasium or anything else tonight. We're giving the city manager until November 15th to get more information, or we're not going to. I mean, the decision is one way or the other. So is there anyone else who'd like to speak? I have no more cards. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to ask for comments from the Council. Mr. Tremblay had his hand up a long time ago.
Yeah. No, that's okay. Well, yeah, I do have a few comments on this and just arrived at the dance, so to speak, less than two years ago. The fact is that we -- that the use of -- or the potential use of the Firehouse by St. Mary Magdalene and by the archdiocese has veered off what its initial potential usage was going to be. And there is a cost associated, it's in the staff report, total cost at 1.6 million. I have a number of concerns, specifically the concern on how a gymnasium, which is something different than what was initially envisioned, where it's going to be in a very prominent location in Old Town, how it could affect both positively and/or negatively the vitality of Old Town and that area of Old Town. I have a concern about that. I have a concern on how it would be laid out, if it were to go forward, how it would be laid out, how it would face the street, how the intended uses could impact parking in the area for businesses in the area, and as well as the use of Disdar Park. At a later part of this agenda tonight, we have an economic development strategic plan, which I personally think is extremely important, and part of that plan is with respect to Old Town and the vitality of Old Town. So I'm concerned about that aspect of it. But the second thing, and Mr. Morgan, it is not a joke with me, I'm glad you -- it is not a joke with me, and Mr. Lorimer raised it. I would like to know, as part of item number three in the staff report on anticipated uses of the building, whether the archdiocese of Los Angeles and St. Mary Magdalene is willing to allow for some form of joint use of a gymnasium if, in fact, it were to be built. I would just like them to address that. That is part of component number three in this staff report, and I would like to have some kind of answer, because that will have -- that will inform my thoughts regarding this. According to the staff report, it's going to cost a million and a half to tear down or to do the office building. The estimated costs of the gymnasium in the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District Needs Assessment Study, and that level, that Plan 2 level, is far higher than that. And I don't know about that number. I'm skeptical. I'm always skeptical about numbers, and I'm skeptical about the Needs Assessment number. I'm not as skeptical about this number. But the fact is, if you take both those numbers and you juxtapose them against one another, the cost of a gymnasium on that site, in my uneducated opinion, I'm going to gather, is going to be far higher than the cost of doing the office building, so -- or the office improvements. And I note that because that would take an intensive capital campaign on the part of the parish and the part of the archdiocese. You know, we've gone from, you know, again, I just came to the dance, feels like a really short time ago on this project, but, you know, the whole idea has now been shifted to something different. And again, I would like to know whether, as part of number three, anticipated uses of the building, whether the archdiocese would be willing to enter that, because there is that need. We certainly have learned that through the Needs Assessment Study. We may have differing views on what comes first. Is it senior center, or is it the gymnasium, or whatever? But that need is there, and I'd like to know the archdiocese's response to it.
Mr. Kilday.
Just a couple of things. I just want -- I'm going to say this as succinctly as I can. The parties to know how important this November 15th date is. We don't just set dates arbitrarily here. You know, this is a date, in my opinion, that's really important to see whether or not we can gather up the data and see where this goes. I have been here quite a long time. We've had, and I don't need to say this, everybody that's followed this, we've had a lot of starts and stops here through various reasons here, but the bottom line is, this is where we are today. I would like to see what the applicant comes back with on November 15th, but I want you to know that it's serious, and nobody can do this partially. You know, we either are all in or we're not all in, and we need to know, in my opinion, by November 15th. Again, you know, the gymnasium thing, Mr. Tremblay was very eloquent in what his sayings, and I'm sure the other council members will have a lot of comment on that, too. Construction costs are rising, and they are going up. We all know that now. But as far as this timeline here, I'm willing to follow this, and I'm just keeping my fingers crossed that we could come up with a plan at that date.
Mrs. McDonald.
I think we need to go back a little bit in history and look at when this all started, and I was not here when you originally bought the fire station, but was during the redevelopment time when we were looking for ways to reuse it and that vitality of Old Town that we were looking for. So we did indeed go down that path of a restaurant use along with the park and trying to get people down to that part of Old Town, and we had some great ideas. Many, many -- we had, I remember, five or six different people came in with ideas on what to use it for. And at that point in time, the church and the school, they were there at the table then, because they have a school that kind of are outgrowing that site, and the whole idea was that they wanted to be able to expand. We made the decision then that that vitality we were looking for was very important and went down that road of trying to see if we could make a restaurant work. Of course, then the economy took a dive, and that was that, and we've never really come out of that as far -- restaurants are very difficult to place. We've learned that with our spots out at the outlet mall, that getting someone to come in and do a restaurant. And to do a restaurant in that firehouse probably would have cost a lot more than we ever dreamt when we start looking at those prices just because of having a restaurant and food use. So we went down a course at Set for a while. My understanding, and maybe we need to have the principal come back up, if I'm wrong, he can correct me, but it was always my understanding that why they went with offices there, that you were going to create a gymnasium up on top for school use, or at least school space. So they were moving the non-school piece down and doing something for the kids up on the top. So in my eyes, we're not creating absolutely something new, unless I'm wrong. We're simply flipping it. We're saying, let's put the gymnasium down with the playfields with -- because remember, that's where they are, where it bumps right up to the school, and then they've got the volleyball courts on the end. So it is, in some ways, a very natural place for a gymnasium to be, and my understanding is, and you would leave your offices that you have up on top of the hill there. So maybe he needs to come up and correct that when I'm done, if I am wrong. So I'm not looking at it being something totally new for the church. They were just trying to find a way to expand their school to better use the space they have, and that, you know, it's pretty landlocked, so it is an opportunity for them. I don't expect it to be as large as the gymnasium the Pleasant Valley's looking at. It's for a smaller school, and maybe he can tell us how many students he has now, but I don't see it being that large community center that we would expect to see with Parks and Rec. So I think those are things, obviously, that would get flushed out in the -- as they bring more to us, but I think we don't want to go off in the wrong direction, because we think that suddenly they're throwing something at us that's probably not in the big picture any different than what they were probably looking for in the beginning. So please correct me if I'm wrong in my --
Be mindful.
Please do, if you don't mind.
Come on up, but you'll have to come to the microphone, because if I'm off base, correct me now. Please identify yourself again.
Michael, Michael Ronan, principal at St. Mary Magdalene. No, Mrs. McDonald, you're right on the money in terms of that. It's not necessarily creating something brand-new. When we realized that the cost of renovating that, the existing fire station, because we walked into this with all intensive purposes, and honestly, the goal was to save that. I think the Church is in the history of preserving buildings and making buildings, you know, last a long time, as you can see with our chapel. But when we realized that the building was not, in our minds, you know, fiscally responsible to keep, and it was going to be a blank slate, we, in being good stewards of our resources, needed to look at the big picture and say, well, if our end goal is to build a gym, you know, if we're going to tear it down, what could we do that? So even to Mr. Tremblay's point, just because the money might be there to fix the building, you know, being a good steward of our resources, we need to make sure that we're allocating it and looking at the bigger picture. So certainly understand the point, and was not trying to do a, you know, a bait and switch or a quick, a quick, a quick kind of turnaround. You know, we walked into this with the best intentions to save the building. We realized we couldn't. We didn't feel it was fair, to necessarily, for both our own purposes at the parish, but also for the city, to just to drop and say, well, it's on your hands. You figure this out. We decided we would like to proceed with offering an alternative solution to the issue, so.
Am I correct, the fact that you have offices up where the school is, that you'll leave there rather than -- because originally, you were going to do a new gymnasium up there, weren't you?
Right, no, exactly. So exactly right. So those offices would stay there, and then also to the point of, in terms of extra traffic and parking, currently, all of our basketball and volleyball games still happen just on outdoor courts, and so a lot of that would be moving the --
Indoor.
Moving those games and things inside. So again, it wouldn't necessarily be an increase in traffic.
More parking.
Just a different use of the space.
And the thing you might also clarify, you're using the word parish, and most people think of that as being the church, but you're really talking about the school use and the kids.
School and the parish as a whole. You know, we're certainly one. It's not, you know, I think sometimes a common misconception is it's parish and then school. It's kind of two separate.
It's both.
Right? So it's one together. So when you look at in terms of, you know, maybe what's good for the community as a whole, you know, it certainly is more than. You could ask about the numbers. We're at 279 students this year, about 180 families, many of whom are from Camarillo. But the parish, obviously, is a much bigger entity, so you have, you know, the youth from the parish, the different groups from the parish and their ability to use the facilities. And so I think it's important to remember that, that it's more than just our 279 students, but, you know, the bigger parish as a whole.
That's true. My sons went to Boy Scout troop met there for many, many years, and your, what do you call that, your multipurpose room?
Yes, yes, yes.
But the main thing is, I guess what I'm trying to bring in is that it really is for the use of your school and your kids as well, and it's really giving them an indoor space that they can have their school function of PE and all the things that those kids need to do as well.
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
I think that --
Thank you.
Unless Mike's. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, a couple, three things. One is, because I'm hearing some things, come back here. Hey.
You're on the hot seat.
We're not through yet.
It's on our time now, so you're good.
You're -- one of the things I was hearing is that you're not ready to take the whole property, take the park, leave the fire station as it is, take the rest of the property.
No.
Or you tear the whole thing down and take the whole property?
Right.
Okay, I want to make that clear. Secondly, we're looking at a gymnasium, one that we were -- you were, Mr. Tremblay talked about with Park and Rec, much bigger, and even our staff had it reevaluated, much, much overvalued in what it would cost to build that gym, much over. So it's less than what you're thinking. And so I think us moving along and seeing how this goes is better than just all of a sudden saying, oh, it's going to cost too much, 100.6. You're relying on information from the Park and Rec and what they first did.
Well, I actually indicated, Mr. Morgan, that I was quite skeptical of the numbers that had been presented.
That's what I'm saying, from Park and Rec. Okay, so that won't be affecting anyway. I just want to say that gym may not cost as much as you think. The other thing, too, I was there the other day for your outdoor picnic, and we, the knights, were serving, and they're close to 500 people there, and you had all the basketball courts or had cars in it, of course, all lined up in there, and then down the street, and then beside your own -- people, understand, there's parking behind there, behind the school. And I parked a 47 cars, so I know there's parking back there. Anyway, there -- so you have a lot of parking if you use that playground. Instead of being outside, it'll be inside for parking. Okay, that's all I need to know.
I have a comment before I give up my seat. One of -- or my speaking, anyway. One of the things I want to make sure that staff works with them is the setback from the street, so that when we're really looking at that, you talk about that synergy of Old Town, what they, where they would propose to build it in relationship, and what you'd leave out in front of it, so it really still has a good look, and then also how it flows into the park. So it's not just a big old barn sitting there. Well, barns might fit in, because it would go with the horse, but you know what I mean? So it's not just a big building that it really does fit.
I envision not to have sidewalk and then a 30-foot concrete blank wall right when you come up to.
Right. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, that's a -- I was going to give, okay. No, go ahead, because mine was more of a comment. He already answered the question.
I had a couple more comments.
Do you have questions?
I don't have questions.
Do we need him standing here? Okay.
No, thank you, Ms. [inaudible].
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Okay, I'll start with Mr. Tremblay for comments.
Well, two, a couple additional comments, and I appreciate, Mrs. McDonald, your comment relative to an office use and a gym, but that said, we are talking now in 2018 about a different purpose than what was envisioned the last few years, and I think it's fair to say that. So in that light, I played CYO basketball in my parochial elementary school in Marin County for eight years, and I played CYO Catholic Youth Organization basketball in a gym that had a much smaller footprint than, for example, Monty Vista Gym. So I get that. That said, it's still a significant, and I get it, it's still a significant presence if it were to come to fruition in that part of Old Town, so two comments. To reiterate, number one, I am, I have my concerns on how a building like that in such a prominent location in Old Town will contribute to Old Town vitality and parking, et cetera, but all that will be addressed, I think. And secondly, I would like to know what the archdiocese is willing to allow or consider allowing joint public use, or to enter into discussions regarding joint public use of that gymnasium if it were built. So with that, I'm ready to make a motion on the staff report, but I'll defer that until the comments.
Let's wait and hear some other people's questions. Mr. Kilday? I mean, not questions, comments. You have comments?
I think I made my comments. Just that November 15th date is very important to me.
Mrs. McDonald.
I guess my one last comment is, and I would agree with the ability to, for others to use, much like the Boys and Girls Club is not a governmental agency, but CYBA plays there now, so maybe it's not that formal joint use that you're used to seeing between governmental agencies, but there's agreement out there that the public can have access under some kind of arrangement that, to be able to use it. So I think as long as it, sometimes when you use the word joint use, you go to that formal governmental, you know?
I'll frame my motion appropriately.
Okay. Mr. Morgan?
As they say, when you use a gymnasium, you don't get it for free most of the time for leagues and things. You pay. So if that were something to happen, of course, they can make money out of it, too, by allowing others and also, it doesn't have to be all the time. the time. I'm talking about some where you can make money doing it also. To me, this is a way, let's look and see what this shows before we start talking about what else we can, we've been doing this for years, trying to find something, trying to find commercial stuff. Because the building is so expensive to fix, we're talking about $1,006 for total, too expensive to fix, why, who are we going to find someone? We've tried, we've tried, and we have tried. Now's a good chance to look and see what we can do to make that property happen that will benefit the whole community. And I think that's what they're looking at, maybe helping benefit the whole community.
I have comments in two ways. First of all, I'm curious as to whether Don Waunch is watching tonight. When Don left us a few years ago, and was no longer on the council, and as he left, he said, I don't want to look out at that property and see a gymnasium face right there as I get off the freeway, as I...
Without a setback.
Without a setback, that's what he said. And so I, I agree with him. It needs to be set back. If you're going to do a gymnasium, it shouldn't be forward. I'm not saying, I'm voting for it, I'm just telling you that I really don't want a big old wall right there as you, as the first thing people see as they come off the freeway. The other thing is, I was very vocal either in June or July, the last time we talked about this, and said that was the last time I was going to vote to extend anything. And now we're here with November 15, which is another two months. And I have a problem with the way it keeps being pushed back and back and back after it's been so many years. So I'm not sure how the vote's going to be worded. I am a person who usually keeps my word, and I said I would not vote to extend it. So I'm going to see what happens here. Mr. Tremblay, are you going to make a motion?
You bet. My motion is to, it's going to be a long one, sorry, is to authorize the city manager to obtain further information from the church no later than November 15, 2018, regarding the proposed gymnasium pursuant to the three items listed in the staff report as revised, so the city council can evaluate the church's new request. And with regard to item number three, in the, the third item, in the three items referenced, I would revise that to say the following information, including number three, anticipated uses of the building, including whether the archdiocese is willing to allow some form of joint public use of the gymnasium if it is built, and if so, to specify what it would agree to allow. That's my motion.
Everybody hear the motion and understand it? Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. I like the idea, because I think the church can make money working with Park and Rec, whoever, leagues like we're talking about, that we need that kind of thing.
I didn't put any boundaries on it, Mr. Morgan.
I understand that, but I'm making my statements on it.
I do need to...
There's a, yeah, there's a motion, and a second, we all understand it. So Mrs. McDonald, would you like to comment?
My only fear about making it so they have to come back with exactly what they're going to let us joint use be, and then going to your, November the 15th, I'm thinking that, can you soften it a little bit so that it's, I'm not sure you could accomplish that in two months, because you're going to have to go look out about it, what everybody else, and how it can be used. So the fact that they'd be willing to certainly should be in there.
Well, I get where you're coming from, Mrs. McDonald, and I actually echo some of what Mrs. Craven's reservations. I'm, I don't want to simply ask, gee, are you willing to allow some form of joint public use without...
Can you read that part of the sentence again, and let's see if maybe we can...
Sure, but without, I mean, people are willing to talk about anything. But we have been, well, I've only been to the dance for a short time, but it has gone on long enough.
That's right.
And I want to bring this to a conclusion at some point, at some point.
And I agree totally with you. I'm just not sure that piece can be accomplished in two months.
So what I, what I said, how I, how I changed number three on the, on the staff report is say, anticipated uses of the building, including whether the archdiocese, I'll say Archdiocese of Los Angeles, is willing to allow some form of joint public use of the gymnasium if it is built, and if so, to specify what it would agree to allow.
That's the part I'm having a problem with.
Well, the, the problem is, if I only asked the first part, if I only say the first clause, I could say, sure, I'm willing to talk about it, and then we're going to go out another, we're going to go out months and months. I'd like to start putting some bookends on what the archdiocese would be willing to do, if in fact it were willing to allow some form of joint use.
So, so the middle one's fine to me. I mean, we had the beginning, you added the clause that would they be willing to. They, to me, they would come back and commit to doing it. No problem there. I agree with that, because that's getting you to that point. I'm just not sure if you can fine-tune exactly what that will be, because we don't know that part yet. That's the only part I'm having a problem with.
We've had some debate on the motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? Please vote. And I'm going to say that I will support it only because you put that in there.
Okay. I just don't want it to hold us up. See what happens.
Motion passes unanimously. If it holds it up, I will not vote for another extension.
And it's not so much that, as I also don't want to commit to something we don't know what it is yet either, you know?
Okay, we're going on to city manager, League of Cities, annual conference resolutions, and there are only two.
This will be presented by Senior Management Analyst Roger Pichardo.
Good evening, Mayor Craven, council members, and members of the public. The League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting will be held September 14 as part of the annual conference in Long Beach, California. It is necessary for the city council to provide voting direction on annual conference resolutions scheduled for the league business meeting. This year, two resolutions assess vulnerabilities to local municipal authority, control and revenue, and repeal preemption of regulating pesticides. The league encourages the city council to consider taking action on the two resolutions so that the city's voting delegate can represent the city's position on the resolutions. The first resolution directs the League of California Cities to assess the vulnerabilities to local municipal authority, control, and revenue, and explore the preparation of a ballot measure and/or constitutional amendment that would give the state's voters an opportunity to further strengthen local authority and preserve the role of democracy. The City of Beverly Hills is sponsoring this resolution in response to their concerns over several measures introduced by the legislature and the initiative process attempting to seize local control, authority, and prevent cities from providing optimal service to their residents. This resolution is consistent with Section 1 Local Government Finance of the city's 2017-18 legislative platform, in that it seeks to further strengthen local authority, control, and revenue while also preserving the role of democracy. The second resolution seeks to have the state and the league study the negative impacts of anticoagulant rodenticides and address the inability of cities to regulate the use of rodenticides. The City of Malibu is sponsoring this resolution out of concern the effect of a certain type of rodent control, in this case, anticoagulant rodenticides, has on our, on other wildlife. According to the City of Malibu, anticoagulant rodenticides interrupt the blood clotting process, causing rodents to die from excessive bleeding. Anticoagulant rodenticide is commonly used on rats, mice, gophers, and squirrels. Predator animals that eat rodents can be exposed to anticoagulant rodenticides if they consume animals that have been, that have eaten the bait. These animals include owls, hawks, bobcats, bears, foxes, coyotes, and mountain lions. Furthermore, pets can also be exposed to anticoagulant rodenticides if they eat the bait, consume animals that have eaten the bait. In 2017, the Camarillo City Council adopted a resolution urging businesses to discontinue the sale and use of, and the public to discontinue the use of anticoagulant rodenticides. Currently, the Department of Pesticide Regulation occupies the field of pesticide regulation, preempting local regulation. County agricultural commissioners work to enforce the state laws governing pesticides and have the expertise and resources necessary to regulate this class of rodenticides. The City of Malibu's proposed resolution seeks to provide general law cities, such as the City of Camarillo, with the authority to regulate the use of anticoagulant rodenticides based on their own individual needs. However, since the proposed resolution encourages but does not require action by cities, city costs to regulate anticoagulant rodenticides would be taken on voluntarily. Tonight's suggested action is to provide voting direction on the League of California Cities Annual Conference Resolutions. That concludes my presentation.
Well, first of all, let's be thankful there were only two resolutions.
Exactly.
I remember the day when there'd be about 20, and everybody argued about them, or wanted to add language to them. But we're only dealing with two, so what are the wishes of the council?
I have a question.
Mrs. McDonald?
I have a question on, on Resolution Two, and maybe it goes to what would be said. This is simply asking them to study, not urging them to do something.
Essentially, what they're trying to do is study it, but at the same time, give the cities the opportunity to regulate
Right.
this type of pesticide.
So we want them to pass legislation that allows the cities to regulate it, but that would come at our cost.
Yes.
That would be the ultimate goal, is to pass legislation.
But why don't we, why aren't we going to the point of asking them to, at the state level, to legislate it?
You'd have to ask the City of Malibu that, because they're the ones who introduced the legislation.
I know, but we can always go in, and obviously, you could support theirs, but obviously, go in and suggest that instead of just study something, it goes back to what Mr. Tremblay was talking about earlier. You can study and study and study, and you never do anything. So as long as it's getting us to a point, not just studying, that's, I guess, what my concern is there.
Well, the point I heard...
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, to Councilmember McDonald's point, this was exactly the conversation we had on the staff level. And that is, why isn't the City of Malibu pushing to have state legislation that would cover the full state rather than just the special interest of the Santa Monica Mountains and the issue of mountain lions, which have died from anticoagulant rodenticides? You know, to have cities take on the burden of, even if voluntarily, taking on the burden of regulating anticoagulant rodenticides, cities don't have the expertise for this, and you would just be creating a shadow bureaucracy for that one specific class of rodenticides, which really seems to be far beyond, you know, what cities are doing, especially since the state occupies the field currently. So this is another case where, you know, although Malibu is very concerned about this, another case of something from the state slipping to the local level, that you can see that over time, if you follow that slippery slope, before you know it, we're having to hire people to regulate pesticides where a state agency is already doing that.
So, so would you like us at this meeting to say that we feel that we should ask the state to not allow anticoagulant, that we don't feel it's right and vote against it because we do not feel this is the right way to go about it?
Madam Mayor, our recommendation is, let's recognize that the city council has passed a resolution about the dangers involving anticoagulant rodenticides. I think we took the right, council took the right action at that point. However, this moves us farther down the field in terms of what could end up being our obligations in this area, where, you know, a legislative solution really would be the proper...
Without the state paying us for state mandates.
That's correct. That's correct.
You know, Your Honor, we can go in there, and you can ask for changes. You can, just because they brought it forward, doesn't mean we can't go in and make a suggestion that they change it to...
I know, we can ask.
Strengthen it. But if, you know...
What are the wishes of the council, Mr. Tremblay?
Oh.
I don't mean to vote, but I mean...
No, it's okay. I suspect that the reason it's done this way, having spent some time in the legislature as a staffer, I suspect that the reason they're doing it this way is that they're, they're, they want to involve both the state and municipalities in a study in order to have some traction for the whole idea. And the, right, to have some more traction on a statewide level. I think legislatively, they would gain more traction. I don't know, I haven't looked inside, I can't look inside anybody's mind, but I would suspect that that's the reason why. And the fact here is that you're, you're going from a situation now where legally there is preemption, to, if this were adopted, to then go to a situation where cities would voluntarily, if they wished to do so, go ahead and do that ban. I think this city council did the right thing back in last year, where we adopted the resolution urging businesses to discontinue sale and use of, and the public to discontinue the use of anticoagulant rodenticides. But there are two different approaches on that, right?
Yes.
And query whether or not we would get to the point where we took it on as an enforcement action. But all this does is say, let's look at removing the preemption side. And again, I think that's why they have the traction. So I can support this, because it's an incremental, I think that's why they're doing, it's an incremental step.
Maybe, could I suggest, Your Honor, is that we, obviously, you're right, it's something's better than nothing. I would also like, though, that perhaps we stand up and make the point that we would like to see them take it beyond studying it to actually having the, you know, from a statewide level, truly take action on it. You might get to the end, and it's a yes-no vote on exactly what we've read, then you vote yes. But take the opportunity to kind of give our case for why we think it needs to be a little bit stronger.
And I'm inclined to agree conceptually from a policy standpoint, but I don't think you can get there that, that fast. I think you have to take it in, in an incremental fashion, the way that this is being done. That's why I think this is well considered.
Well, this is only, well, it's a resolution in directing, basically, the league to do something, so...
Together with the state.
Well, but you, we can't, we can't do any, we can't make the state of California do anything.
That's true.
But we can make, we can, we as the league members can have the league do something.
Right, but that, but that's why they're trying to do this, is to get some kind of buy-in from the state.
Well, we can give a try, but I'd like to speed it up.
Well, wouldn't that, you know, okay, so is this an appropriate way to go about this, I guess? I guess we don't know until...
Better than nothing.
...further downstream with this. It is a resolution.
That's all.
Yeah.
You know, we talked about having cities have a choice, you know, giving down to the point where, let each city have a chance to do what they want to do. You don't see many eagles or, or, not crows, but owls or hawks inside a major city, inside the city itself. Let's say San Francisco or inside Los Angeles, where there's no parks and things. They may need that. See what I mean?
Cities of Davis and Richmond have signed on as signers of this. They're fairly large cities.
I'm just saying, I think that, I agree with you, Tony, on that part, because it gives different cities a chance. That some, if you're sitting here next to a forest, you don't want to be using that stuff and having owls and others eat that and die, like we've seen, the mountain lion, they had an article on that one that died down there.
Okay, so we've pretty much discussed this one. There is one other one. It is in line with our legislative platform, the first one. Is there anybody who doesn't like the way that one's worded?
Anything you can do to keep local control, strengthen local control.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, so we agree on the first one. So we're talking about...
And I'm not against this one. I just would like to see it be
Stronger.
Stronger. That's my only comment.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
What?
We support both.
Okay, that isn't exactly what I heard, the discussion, but is there a second for...
You heard Tony say that, and you heard me say that.
Question, Mr. Morgan, to support is to instruct our voting representative...
Yes.
Instruct our voting representatives, sorry about that,
Yes.
to vote in favor of both resolution numbers one and two as presented.
Yes.
Second.
Further discussion?
Will there be any, well, before we vote, can I just ask a question? I mean, will there verbatim, will we stand up and at least talk a little bit about what some of our concerns are, or do you just verbatim...
Not under this motion.
We just verbatim approve what has been submitted to us tonight, then?
You can say anything you want, as mayor, on the issue.
I need to, I need to vote at this meeting and say not what I think, but what the council voted to tell me to do. And so if we follow Mr. Morgan's motion, I will just vote yes on both motions.
Say anything.
And not say anything.
With the maker of, well, we can either vote on it, or I can ask, can I ask if the maker of the motion would include that we vote yes, but the mayor also take the opportunity to stand up and stress the fact that we, as the City of Camarillo, would like to see this enacted at a state level?
That's fine.
I'll change the second.
So now you have... You'll accept that?
I'm sorry?
Okay. No, he seconded it. I was asking if the maker, the second, accepted that, and he said yes. Okay. So we all know what the motion is and what the second is. If this...
So we all know what the motion is and what the second is, if this passes, I know what I will do at that meeting, please vote. Motion carries. Okay, I don't know if we will have time for a study session and a closed session, but we do have a closed session on our schedule for this evening, and so I will ask the city attorney to tell us under which provisions of the code that we will be going into closed session.
Yes, we have public employee performance evaluations for the city attorney and the city manager, it's under Government Code Section 54957, and we have another item, which is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, number of potential cases is one.
Okay, and with that, we will recess to a study session, and we will be back here in, at seven thirty. I'll call the meeting of the Camarillo City Council back to order and have the record reflect that all council members are present. Mr. Kildie, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Raise your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under presentations tonight, we don't have all the ladies here who came last year to talk to us about Constitution Week, so the city clerk and I thought that we would just do something on our own, and so I'm going to read this that they sent us. "The United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties and freedoms and to enjoy those unalienable rights to every American. The tradition of celebrating the Constitution was started by the Daughters of American Revolution. In 1955, they petitioned Congress to set aside September seventeenth through twenty-third annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August second, nineteen fifty-six by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The aims of the celebration are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution. Information, inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life. Encourage the study of historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution. Constitution Week is a great time to learn more about this important document and celebrate the freedoms it gave us. Get involved by encouraging young people to sign the Constitution Week proclamation pledge, and I'm afraid we don't have one here, and ask the local community officials to issue a proclamation." Well, we did that last year, and we're just reading this this year, but September, next week is actually Constitution. Is that what, no, seventeenth through the twenty-third. I'm jumping, is that next week?
Yeah, one more.
Yeah, one more, I'm jumping ahead on time, and we all need time. Okay, so that's Constitution Week. Next is public comments. I only have one card from somebody who'd like to speak to us on an item that's not on the agenda. If there's anybody else would like to speak to us on an item that's not on the agenda, please fill out a blue card and give it to the city clerk. We will get to items on, not, public comments on agenda items later on in the meeting. So the one I have is Matt Lorimer, and Matt, I certainly don't have to explain the rules to you.
Oh, please do explain the rules, I may not have known, you know, I don't live here, but I still got to.
And I did it right this time, it's Matt Lorimer, not Matthew.
Yeah, today it's Matt Lorimer. Good evening, council, I have a couple of things to say this evening, as usual. First thing I would like to talk about is the food truck event that went on last week. I thought it was a good event, I was by the entrance, it's the VIP entrance, and if you want to park there, you got to pay ten dollars. So one of you was there, and that was you, Mr. Morgan, and you proceeded to say, I'm a councilman, I shouldn't have to pay the ten dollars. The security guard said, no, you need to leave. You entered another entrance, Camaro Concerns has a picture on there, I was there. Mr. City Attorney, can you tell the city council and Mr. Morgan what the policy is regarding shaking down vendors or people to get discounts or freebies? Unacceptable. The next thing I'd like to talk about.
What's he talking about?
Uh, the next thing I'd like to talk about is a cath lab. You know, the city council gave basically a half a million dollars to Dignity Health, and they made twenty-eight million dollars, and they're in twenty-eight states. The city attorney seemed to feel that I don't understand what the cath lab is. What I do understand, Mr. City Attorney, you didn't basically tell the public, the cath lab, there's no issue about it opening. The issue is that it makes one point five million, or up to eighteen million dollars by charging insurance companies. You gave them a half a million dollars, city council, you're lobbied, so you can have your names on the wall. That's unacceptable. You didn't tell them that part, it's unacceptable to give money. You know, by the way, the firehouse needs to be torn down, and we want to build another place over there, that money could have helped out. Next things I want to talk about is the measures on the thing, term limits. Basically, I'm against Tony's term limits, which is Measure E, and that stands for XLAX. I tell the public, remember that, E stands for XLAX, you shouldn't vote for it. Measure M stands for M&amp;M's. Okay? Remember, M&amp;M's is better than XLAX. So it's really important that people, when you go to the debates, I hope the public will really read up on it, which one is real and which one's meaningful. You know, when people in the office write their own term limits or give themselves pay raises, it can be a problem. You know, talking about pay raises, we should have an independent council, not elected by the city council, have a drawing, and basically, it should be run by the public. You can only do it one or two terms. The idea you can vote your own pay raises is ridiculous. No job in America, could you go, can you imagine going to your employer and go, hey, you know something, I'm going to vote in my own pay raises, I think I'm going to give myself fifty grand a year? I mean, come on, folks, let's be serious, this is 2018, you guys should trust the public. It's time the public be able to set what you should get in increase, or if any, and that should be by drawing done here, not by you picking them, and they should be allowed to do it one year. Thank you for your comments.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to us on an item that's not on the agenda? Moving on is Departmental Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, I'm Tolly Clifford, and I'm joined tonight by Roger Dale with the Nadelson-Dale Group, who are basically our consulting firm who put together our Economic Development Strategic Plan. We'll go through that tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions when we get to the end of our presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to make our final presentation for a process that we've worked together on for over a year now, and I think is a good milestone for the city. I'd like to review where we are in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the process we've gone through, and what the next steps will be as the city begins to implement the recommendations. Wanted to start by thanking all of you, first of all, members of the council, who have interacted with us throughout this process, and it's been very helpful, and I think has definitely influenced the way this document has been shaped and put together, so thank you for that input throughout. Also, the staff has been excellent to work with, starting with Dave Norman, who initially contacted us about the opportunity to work on this project. Tom Fox, before he retired, was really instrumental in keeping the process moving along, put a lot of his effort and his institutional knowledge into the plan, and I think you'll see that reflected there as well, as well as his assistant Kathy Tally. Joe Vaca and John Fraser also were key participants in the process and giving us the information that helped to give this a unique, community-based perspective. And then I also want to thank Tolly Clifford, who's come in fairly late in the process, but is already really up to speed on where the plan is heading, and I think as we get to the end of my presentation this evening, he'll step in and talk about the city's expected next steps, and I'm confident that he's on board with that, and will do a great job in that area as well. So tonight, I'd like to just review the planning process, I know we've been through this before, but there may be some members of the community here who are new to the process, like to review that for everyone's benefit, and then primarily give you a summary of the recommendations and next steps. So stepping back and looking at the big picture, really, the reason the community does an economic development strategy is to foster high-quality economic growth, and we know that opportunities to grow in terms of new development are presented to cities often, but the question becomes not just a matter of quantity, but quality, and this is really a time in your development as a community where you're looking at maximizing the quality of the growth and directing it in a way that is consistent with your community's values. And in that regard, the process itself has been very intense in terms of community and stakeholder input. We started about a year ago with a community-wide workshop, and from that, went to a community online survey that got general direction on what members of the community at large are thinking about economic development and the future direction of the city. Then the, I would say, the core of our stakeholder input process was the Economic Development Summit meetings. There were three meetings spaced over several months where we had fifty or more stakeholders attend at each meeting to give us their perspectives from primarily the business community and the development community, as well as other community-based organizations, on what the opportunities are for future industry growth and development in Camarillo, and what some of the challenges might be to make that more feasible, and things that the city can do to, again, encourage quality and not just quantity of growth. The consultant team also did several background studies to kind of validate the ideas that came out of the community workshops, looking at demand for new real estate development in terms of commercial and industrial development, based on the demographics, both now and as we expect them to change in the coming years, as well as an analysis of potential industries that might be viable to target for growth. And I think we've actually had more than two study sessions, but we had, as you well know, several study sessions with the council, and that was really helpful to us to make sure that we were delivering a plan, that there's a comfort level for you as the decision-makers to pursue the recommendations. So the plan is really a mix of all of those sources of input, the stakeholders, as well as our own team's experience in doing these types of strategies around California and other places in the United States, and our familiarity with the best practices for economic development. And then, of course, the direct input from the city council and the staff, which is important because it's largely going to be on the plate of the staff through direction and support from the council to implement this, so a plan that is, has the buy-in of the staff and the council, in our experience, is much more implementable and action-oriented than one where that input has not been sought out. I'm going to repeat a few things that we've talked about in earlier meetings, but I think they're a great starting point, especially for those who may be with us tonight for the first time, that really highlights why the opportunities we think are exceptional here in Camarillo, and why a strong economic development program is a sound investment, and you can expect a good return on investment of resources in Camarillo. You do have a very vibrant and diverse local economy, ranging from industries like tourism and destination retail, the outlet centers and so forth, the downtown area. Of course, agricultural historically has been a strong and continues to be a strong component of the economy, a very strong and interesting manufacturing sector, including biotech and some other technology-oriented activities, IT or information technology, professional services, and some distribution facilities and wholesale trade. As we all know, the amount of land that's remaining for in Camarillo is somewhat limited, and that has consequences and implications for how we approach economic development. I think it's important to think, but to realize, though, that dramatic changes in the physical appearance of the community are unlikely at this point, land use changes are, the patterns are pretty well set in many cases, and so we're not at a stage in your development where I would expect the character of the community to change dramatically based on new development, it's really more of a fine-tuning stage than it is a reinvention stage. We've also found that there is a very strong core of stakeholders that are interested in the quality of economic development, and I think they are also sensitive to the fact that the land capacity here is finite, and I think many would say that's a good thing, because the community has established a very high quality of life, good image, and that is not likely to dramatically change based on some new development, on the areas where new development could be accommodated. One thing that came out of our stakeholder meetings that was especially exciting to us is that there is a high level of interest in entrepreneurial development, kind of a tech startup community here, which we really learned about through this process, and I've said this before to you, but it's something you can really be proud of and excited about. There are many communities where we've worked that talk about this and would like to know how they can get that, and you've already got that starting here, so that's something that I think I would really encourage you to nurture and work with in the coming years. It's also interesting that there are a concentration of civic organizations that serve the larger Ventura County region that are based in Camarillo. I think that's also great for your image and provides part of the social infrastructure that makes economic development programs successful, and some important and unique institutional assets that are either in the city or near the city, the Cal State Channel Islands campus, the port, the airport, the naval base, are all things that have special opportunities attached to them for industry and economic development. There's also several projects that are underway, or probably by now nearing completion, that are important, and again, good anchors for economic development. The improvements to Highway 101, which have been a long time coming, but I think are going to be a significant step in the right direction in terms of infrastructure, the hotels that are under development and the convention facilities, that really raises the bar in terms of the types of visitors and business-type visitors that can, we can expect to attract to the city. The opening of the Matter Labs Think Tank and Startup Studio, again, good, strong indication of that interest in entrepreneurial development, and similarly, the maker space at the airport, all great assets for building new business opportunities. So from that background of what we think the strengths and opportunities are, we developed a series of recommendations and put together the document, it's organized in terms of a summary of the background technical studies we did, highlights of the community input, a recommended action plan, and that's prioritized, and totally, in particular, we're talking about some of the first steps or next steps in the process. And then we've also identified through our stakeholder outreach a number of partners in the community, organizations, and other government agencies that can be partners in implementing the plan. Most of those are not new to you, they're organizations you already work with, but just reinforced in the plan where their roles might be important in future economic development programs. There's basically seven areas of action items, marketing, existing business retention and expansion, entrepreneurial development, real estate and community development, workforce development, some infrastructure recommendations, this is not a comprehensive capital improvement plan, but we just want to complement that with some areas that we think are especially important from improving the capacity for business and economic development, and then also some recommendations that deal with quality of life. quality of life, which especially in a high-quality community like Camarillo is really an important foundation for economic and business development. There are a total of 25 recommended action items. Some of them are things that are really just continuations of existing programs, others are new, and among the newer ones, we've kind of prioritized them in terms of things that would happen sooner and things that would be lower priorities and implemented later as additional resources might become available. So I'm going to fairly quickly go down the list of strategies and just indicate if it's a one, a two, or a three. One means that it's the first priority, it's something that would require new resources, it's either a new program or an existing program that would be ramped up considerably. Status, number two is a status quo, which is basically an existing program that, for now, would continue at existing resource levels. And then three is a new program that would require additional resources, but we're recommending that that come later after you've got some initial headway from the earlier actions. So the first area, as I mentioned, is marketing and outreach, and here, the first priority is actually taking that to the next level and taking our recommendations and putting them in the form of an actual marketing plan, and I know that the city already does marketing as part of its economic development efforts, but I think it's a good time to revisit that and comprehensively look at the strategy for marketing based on the new opportunities that we've identified for the types of businesses that you might be successful in attracting. The marketing outreach program also includes some ideas for place-making. These are things that are already underway or kind of reflected in existing policies in the city, and we're not, at this point, recommending new resources, but just referencing that here is something that does have an economic development benefit. The next area, and this is something that I think city staff, as we started this process, was aware that it's a very important role the city already does, but that the resources are limited, and the ability to reach out to as many businesses who might be helped by your programs is constrained by existing resources. So we have recommended some specific areas where business retention and outreach could be expanded with new resources, and these are all high-level priorities in our recommendations. Expanded business outreach program, the concept of a business advocate, sometimes called an ombudsman, but that term maybe is a little bit out of date, but the concept of someone at City Hall that is helping business applicants and development applicants to get through the process, of course, maintaining all the existing city standards, but make sure that that process is friendly to the types of businesses that you're trying to attract. And including that, a get-to-yes team, and again, this is something that I understand the city already does, but to perhaps devote more resources to that and advertise it more is something that is really part of the way the city does business. Third area is entrepreneurial development. We've got some recommendations about making Camarillo a startup-friendly city, and partly that's, again, a matter of kind of messaging, getting that word out that you are open for that type of business and encouraging it. There are some existing incubator and accelerator programs in the community. We're not recommending that the city directly fund or participate in those, but that you would coordinate with those and, again, include them as part of your marketing resources. Something that would come later is, and this is common in many communities, that entrepreneurs don't have as much access to startup capital as they would like, and that's something that we're not really recommending as an initial priority, simply because it's generally beyond the role of a city, especially a city of this size, to get directly into funding new business startups, but there could be an opportunity to coordinate with and, again, help to market existing non-city organizations that are in that business. Leveraging private startup resources, leveraging institutions and industries, these are things that are really already part of your way of doing business, and we're recommending that those stay. And then positioning the city as a place for innovation, and this could have some land use and infrastructure implications, but again, it's also very important just as part of a marketing message that the world knows, and frankly, I, before starting this process, wasn't aware of the extent to which Camarillo is already a strong area for technology-oriented development, and that message really can be put out more strongly. Next area is real estate and community development. Coordination of priority areas and sites, this is something the city already does. In fact, part of this process, the Community Development Department gave us an excellent map of existing sites that are available for development for different types and projects that are underway, so the city is very much on top of where there are opportunities and where new development might go that would accommodate new business growth that would continue. Some areas that could be new priorities would be development streamlining. We've recommended a follow-up study or audit to look at ways that the entitlement and permitting process could be streamlined further. Our impression from talking to the business communities, Camarillo already is well above average and does a good job in that, but just want to kind of keep that message going forward, and so that's the recommendation there. And it's really beyond the scope of what we do as a firm to go in and do that type of an audit, so there are specialists that do that, and this might be a good time to visit that type of a process. Marketing, the hotel conference centers is, again, that's already underway, that's a great opportunity, that would be a high priority. Retail repositioning, this is something that most communities are now facing as the retail industry around the world is changing, and we don't have specific, immediate recommendations, but it's just something the city has to continually monitor and kind of anticipate that there may be changes that need to be addressed in older shopping centers in the coming years, and be positioned to think about other land uses that might be appropriate on those sites. Same thing for business park capacity, that might be a good alternative use of shopping centers that may become, or less viable in the future, a business park might be a good alternative use. And housing diversification is always a difficult topic in Southern California because of our basically high housing prices. There are a number of programs within the city and the surrounding region that are addressing affordable housing, probably under-resourced, but this is not something that we're recommending the city get directly involved in as part of its economic development program, but to continue to be aware of those and see where it might, there might be opportunities to expand housing development that could accommodate workforce housing. Next area is workforce development. Again, these are things that are very important, but not necessarily directly within the role of the city in this case. You're kind of coordinating with school districts and workforce development organizations, and I think you do a good job of that already, and we're recommending we kind of keep that status quo level of effort from the city's end. Infrastructure, again, this is not intended to be an overall capital improvement plan, you've got another process for that, but the Highway 101 improvements you're already doing, that's a high priority. Other city infrastructure, again, is part of your normal capital improvement plan process. We would just recommend that that be coordinated with economic development, so if issues come up in the future where there are specific types of infrastructure that are important for projects or programs the city's pursuing, that those be prioritized. Non-city infrastructure would include, for example, broadband, and again, I think this is an area, especially if you're pursuing technology startups, that you'll need to keep on the, keep this on the radar screen, but it's not necessarily a direct city action because it's often non-city providers. Quality of life, these are things that we would consider important as amenities for making the area attractive for economic development, community gathering places. That's, again, something that would happen later, but something to keep on the radar screen. Other quality of life initiatives that we've kind of outlined in a general way in the report. The one thing that we've talked about is, as a status quo, is the signature events, and we know you've got a good list of events that are popular and successful in the city. Keep those up to date, I guess is our recommendation. Make sure that they're in sync with the types of demographic that your community is attracting, and that they stay in sync with that, I guess would be the recommendation, and as of now, I think they're excellent. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Tolly, and he'll talk more about the specific things the city anticipates doing as we move towards implementation.
Yeah, as you can tell, the plan is quite extensive, and we can't do it all immediately, and so what we've taken a look at is what should we do first, and more or less, to what level should we do it? And really, what we really need to do is just remind everybody out there initially that Camarillo is a great place to live and do business, and we want to get that message out there, we want to work with all these various groups and make that happen. And then, as we're going along, we also want to identify what additional budget do we need in this area? What resources do we need to really get that word out there and to continue doing that? But in keeping with this, perhaps I should have put this slide first, is we really need to know from an economic development perspective, how are we going to measure what it is that we're doing? How are we going to measure our performance? How do we know if we're doing a good job or a bad job? How does the public know? How do the businesses know? How do potential new businesses know? And as part of that, we also want to develop a communication plan so that we can do some outreach, but so that people can also reach us and let us know what concerns they have and what changes they would like to see. So we have to determine what's the best way to do that, what type of a medium should we use to undertake that type of an activity. And then, of course, one of the places where we want to see, where we will see some of our biggest gains is just enhancing our existing business environment, and that's when we're looking at our processes that we have in place. How do we make them better? How can we expedite approvals? How do we expand and retain our business? How do we make that happen? We may not initially need to bring in somebody to do an audit, we may just want to sit around first with four, six, eight people who've gone through our processes and ask them, what went well? What needs improvement? Have a look at that before we go to an actual audit. We can do that fairly quickly and inexpensively as well, but at the same time, we want to continue to outreach to businesses who are operating and say, "How you doing?", and find out, is there anything we can do to help you along? What kind of messaging can we assist you with? Talk to them about mentoring other businesses. What tends to happen in cities that have positive economic growth? The businesses help one another, so even when you're competing with somebody, you tend to help one another so that everybody succeeds. We want to really encourage that. We also, of course, want to encourage the startups. We do want the new businesses. We really have a group here with a lot of, several groups here with a lot of energy in this regard, and they want to get going, and they want to start collaborating with some of the existing businesses that are here, with the universities, the colleges, with the nonprofits. They want to work in the incubators, in the accelerators, they want to work in the spaces, and they want to work with the government agencies to make them succeed. They want to see the whole climate here be one of collaboration and cooperation, and I think we, as a city, can assist in that role very strongly. And one way of doing that is making sure that the data and the information out there is available. Do people know what's available to buy, rent, lease? Do they know what potential opportunities? Do they know what our business environment is actually like? Do they know who they can talk to? Do they know who the support organizations? Do they know where the accountants are? Do they know where the lawyers are? We need to help them find that information, develop the network. The city may not physically host that, somebody else may, but we have to be able to guide people to that, and as a first step, that's something we should be doing. And then, of course, we want to make sure that our infrastructure is appropriate, and so we're talking about having the places, we're talking about having the quality of life, that it's not just talk, that we actually are doing it, that we know where the heartbeat of the city is and that we're supporting it, and that we're looking at the supplemental needs, whether it's housing, whether it's transit, whether it's broadband, whatever it happens to be, that we work and make that happen. We can do a good analysis to see what we need, and I think that's a really good place to be starting. And with that, you'll notice in the report, there's a whole bunch of words written as what's recommended, but actually, what we're asking to do is to adopt the Economic Development Strategic Plan. If you do that, we will then publish it, we'll finalize it, publish it, and we'll undertake these initial activities. We'll come back on a quarterly basis, and we'll give you the report card, let you know how it's going, what's going well, what needs improvement, and what would you like to see changed? And I think this is an activity that will continue to evolve, continue to grow, as will our businesses and our economy. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Questions? Mr. Kildee.
Yeah. Is there anything in this report that you found that surprised you, and is there anything that you can think of in this report that basically wasn't addressed vis-à-vis the economic patterns that are happening along, across the state and across our nation? I know, and I ask you that because I know you've done a lot of these, and I'd just be interested if there's something that you saw in here that somewhat, I don't want to say you get surprised in this business, but somewhat surprised you, and is there anything that, you know, that you didn't find in here that you thought you would?
Well, the question about the surprise, I think I mentioned already, I have worked a lot in Ventura County for about 25 years. I don't think we've worked too much in the city of Camarillo, though, so I've driven through Camarillo many, many times, and I had no idea, to be honest, we had this much manufacturing and technology-oriented industry here. That was a surprise, and it's a very good surprise, so that's definitely reflected, and I guess the message in that is that there are probably many other people who don't know that, and that's a tremendous asset that you can do more to market if you choose to go in that direction. In terms of other trends, I don't believe we have overlooked anything that would be on the standard checklist of what you should be talking about for an economic development plan. This is, we've taken a pretty comprehensive approach, as you can see, by pulling in topics as wide as housing and quality of life and real estate development, things that are all in our mind, part of economic development, but in some communities, the focus in economic development basically begins and ends with marketing, and we agree that marketing is basically a very important economic development activity, but it's not as effective if it's not backed by the substance in the community, the quality of life, the high-quality infrastructure and workforce and other foundational issues. So we've, I believe, addressed all those. One area that I mentioned that I think you'll want to keep your eye on is changes in the retail market. This is a concern to many communities, but especially communities like yours, which have developed a great retail tax base through your outlet centers. Fortunately, outlet centers, at this point, have been less impacted by the types of things we see going on in the retail industry compared to, for example, regional shopping centers, so, or like a shopping mall, and many communities are struggling. But it's something you definitely need to keep your eye on constantly and begin to think about, what is the next generation of, going to look like of shopping centers or other types of land uses that would potentially replace them as that market evolves?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just comment, I think that...
Oh, we haven't.
Well, we'll do a comment in a minute, go ahead, no questions.
Okay, we have one member of the public who'd like to speak to us, and now it's not Matt, but Matthew Lorimer.
You know, the third time's a charm, so, well, that was a very interesting study. I've been in the city for several years, and I got to tell you, that was really disappointing, what I just heard. Let me just tell you what the issues are in the city, because I've been here a long time, and I've voiced them to you. If you're a business owner in this city, the user fees are out of control. We've talked about that, the banner fees, the stormwater inspection fee, $300 for a restaurant, if you have water on the ground, they inspect it. That affects the business. User fees, Old Town, take a look at Old Town, how many times has the business has gone in and out? I've said before, how many times has this city council been down there and talked to Old Town? Old Town people are struggling, those business owners, you talk to them, they'll tell you the city's abandoned that part of town, and I mean, you've got to do more than have a conversation, you've got to go down there and get in the pit and talk to them, okay? When they put a rack of clothes on in front of their store, your code inspectors already jump down on them. If you're a restaurant owner, you get jumped down because of a stormwater inspection fee. You know something? The business owners need some support. The business owners need some support around here. You know something? There should be some fees available. You gave half a million dollars of dignity help, makes $28 billion. Where's the help for the little mama pot business who wants to upgrade their shop? Where is it? Take a look at some of the businesses that are dilapidated in the city. And far as housing goes, you shouldn't worry about housing. Do you know it takes $112,000 to qualify for a $600,000 house? You've got to have 20% down, okay? The idea that's not important. Jobs. You need high-paying jobs. You know why? Because your houses are no longer $250,000, okay? They're $600,000. And you know something? If housing isn't important, like this gentleman said, then why are you buying stock lumber? I mean, the idea you hire people to come in here and they've talked about nothing what the needs are of the business owners of this community. I haven't heard anything. You guys need to go down there and talk to your business community. You need to send a postcard out and see what the needs are of this community. I didn't see any guidelines. I saw like a generic study just dropped in your lap with no specifics in place. My God, you guys are running on experience. Is this the experience that you hired? I didn't hear it tonight. I heard general comments. They don't even have a clue what's going on in here. I didn't hear one word about the idea you bought stock lumber, what you're doing with the firehouse, about job creation. You know, that is your responsibility. Everything's your responsibility. The graffiti along the side of the highway, how it's out of control. Every issue is important. You need a little more specifics than just a general topic, okay? I didn't see it tonight. I saw a really bad study. It didn't go down to meat and potatoes. What does the city really need? Think about it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to us on this issue? Come forward, we'll go on to council comments. Mr. Tremblay.
Sure, I've got quite a few comments. And I'm really glad that we're spending some time and talking about this topic this evening. This is one of my four goals in running for the council in 2016. And in my mind, it's absolutely critical for the future of this city. I think I want to start by saying that I think the process for this study and the community engagement that went into it were excellent. And notwithstanding what the last speaker said, I respectfully disagree. I saw a lot of business owners at that process and a lot of residents at that process, and I want to compliment, compliment our consultant on coming up with a study that, when I read through it, is loaded with specifics. And there are all kinds of areas in which to dwell. And I would love to get down in the weed on a lot of those specifics, but I will probably, I'll get down the weeds on a few. But anyway, I want to compliment you. This is so important that I don't want to see this study on a shelf. And that is my concern, because it's not so much, it's the folks who are in their 20s and 30s and 40s who are going to be feeling the most impact of what we are doing now in the, close to the 2020s, getting there. From an economic development standpoint, I've, my belief is that if you don't grow, you die. And we cannot allow that to happen in this city. And I think there is all kinds of reasons to be optimistic. We already have a, you know, I hear from folks who have a complaint about this or a complaint about that, but the fact is that most everyone I talk to loves living in the city of Camarillo. Well, there's got to be a reason for that. Notwithstanding all the doomsdayers and all the folks who find fault with this or with that, the fact is, we live in a pretty special community. So, why is that? Think about it. We have the entire stage set. We have what you referred to, Roger, as important and unique institutional assets. We have Navy bases. We have an airport. We have the Port of Waini. We have infrastructure. We have all kinds of things where the table is set. And consequently, we also have an incredible quality of life here. So we have all kinds of things that are ready and available to us, and it's already a great city in which to live and work. As I was reading this report, I was thinking about the fact that our kids, and so I'm in my 60s, and we have three grown children, and we have kids who are growing up and perhaps going to university here. I forgot the, I didn't mean to exclude the university, which I think is an incredible asset for this community. We have kids growing up. I want to keep them here. I want to keep a lot of them here. And in order to do that, we have to create the right type of jobs. And you refer to it, I wrote it down. In fact, you indicated foster high-quality economic growth. So, high-quality economic growth is not several hundred minimum wage jobs. It's high-quality economic growth in terms of overall growth and overall wage earning growth and potential. Because if you accumulate wealth in a community through higher-paying jobs, you increase the community's wealth, you increase the community's quality, ability to do what it needs to do, and you make it stronger. You can still do it and preserve open space. And as you noted, there is finite space still remaining in the city. I think it's referred to in the study as, quote, "a vibrant city with finite remaining land capacity." And I think that's pretty generally true. The first priorities, and for the council, I'm focusing on big page 33 through 35 in terms of the first priorities. And I know that out of 25 categories, or specific recommendations, 10 are first priority. And I'm going to come back to that in just a minute because it's relevant to where I'm going to go with this. But some of them, for example, in terms of importance, positioning Camarillo for biotech and tech startups, in my opinion, is critical. I can't, I cannot overstate the importance of Old Town and the Old Town rebranding. It is critically important for this community. And we can talk about the community park, or I'm sorry, the old courthouse property and where that's going to go, where we see that going, and where Disdar is going, et cetera. But we need, we need an Old Town, in my opinion, Old Town rebranding, and we need an active merchants association. And it could come down to something like its improvement district that Ventura has with the city putting in the major part of the funds, but I'm, for the first year or two anyway, but that's a topic for another day. The attraction of new business is great. Well, I know, I'm not advocating that one tonight, but we'll get there. The attraction of new business is critically important, but I think what's even more important is the retention and growth of our existing business base. And speaking as a former Chamber of Commerce president, that's what we did most every day. Here's my concerns. So I think we have the, I think we have the stage set, and again, I really compliment you on the study, and I resist anybody saying that it doesn't have the specifics. I think it does. But here's my concern. My concern is that, from a staffing standpoint, I have been advocating publicly that the city hire an economic development person, full-time, economic development. I do not want to see this study sit on a shelf. Now, there are pros and cons with hiring a 100% dedicated economic development person, right? You have the costs, you have the burdens, et cetera, but you also have the upside as well. And I know that, Mr. Clifford, as the Assistant City Manager, you're going to be spearheading this. And I know that we have a senior management analyst, John Frazier, who's very good. Both of you are excellent. And I understand that the approach that staff is recommending is incremental. And I don't, and there's a concern about adding new staff, but I don't want to see our Assistant City Manager overextended and our Senior Management Analyst overextended. And they have other duties as well as this. And so, we may go down this path right now in terms of responsibility for, and I know, and I'm sure you will do an excellent job, Mr. Clifford, and I'm going to hold you to it. But I want to be very aggressive in terms of how we judge what the results are of your efforts and hold your feet to the fire, because I want to see this aggressively implemented. And I would suggest to you that the, what you put up in terms of the performance measures, you should add to those. The performance measures that I want to see is every three months, a very specific list of what has been undertaken with respect to each and every one of the first priorities, the 10 first priorities that are listed on pages 33 through, 33 through 35, I got my pages right. I'd like to have a very specific report on a quarterly basis of that. And I think we should revisit at some point whether or not, and no disrespect at all, because I know Mr. Clifford is very able, and so is Mr. Frazier, but I think we should revisit on a regular basis whether it makes sense to have a full-time economic development person. This city used to have, as you all well know, an economic development person. Don't know if it was full-time. But, but this is 2018, and we have a, we have, as far as I'm concerned, one chance to do this right. And I think we have an excellent study, an excellent plan. The challenge now is implementing it. And part of that is getting buy-in from the public, which is why I like the community engagement part of this process so much. That is a continuing important part of this. So I have my, I'm all for this. I want to, I want to compliment you again. We should, whatever the recommended form of motion is for finalize, if it's to finalize and publish this EDSP and undertake the initial implementation actions, and that's fine, and I'll certainly support that. But I have my concerns, and I want to see this, please, aggressively implemented.
Any other comments? Mr. Kildy.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've, we've had a small business here in Camarillo for many decades, and it's a great place to do business here. A lot of economic development can be broken down, in my opinion, to very simple terms. And one of the simplest terms is the amenities in your city and whether or not CEOs and business people want to live in your city. And that constitutes a lot of basic things, you know? It constitutes schools, it constitutes park, convenience, how far are you from vacation spots? How far are you from a major airport? How do you get your goods and services to market? Things of that nature. I had an individual that opened up a business a couple of years ago, and I asked him, how'd you find Camarillo? And he said, my wife likes it here. There's your economic development right there, and I'm thinking, wow, okay. But that is a component. And to do anything, you need a framework and you need the data. And I think if nothing else, this gives us the data, this gives us one of the building blocks to start building on this. And I think that it's important to have the statistical data. I also think it's important to look at what the history is. My understanding is the number one employer in Ventura County is naval-based Ventura County. Now, those are high-paying jobs, you know, a lot of them live in Camarillo. Number two, I believe, the next largest employer is the county of Ventura, another recently high-paying job and, you know, a good employer. Number three, from what I understand, is Amgen. So here you've got three sectors here, and they're all economic development. So we need to focus, and I think you're absolutely right, by talking about what the future jobs can bring. And it's going to change rapidly in no less than probably 10 to 15 years, and we need to be cognizant of that. But what you really need is the data. You need the data here so we can build on this. And I think Mr. Tremblay and the other council members, when they talk, will be absolutely right on what they say. You know, we have a lot of positives here, so let's accentuate what Camarillo does well. And there's a lot of things that Camarillo does well here. There's a lot of businesses that I didn't even know existed here, but do. And you start going around to, you know, these areas of town, and there's a lot of businesses that are very successful there, and you never hear about them. And maybe that's a good thing. I think, you know, if you hear about them, maybe there's some things that you don't always want to hear, but it's important to hear that. But there's a lot of positives here, too. So I think we can, we can build on this. This is a good strategy. The key word that I want everybody here tonight to remember is flexibility. We have got to be flexible in our jobs here, because that is going to be a real key. There will be industries that we don't even know about within two or three years that's going to start popping up, and we want to be positioned to try to get those industries to employ people, not only, you know, we talked about a long time now, that not only live here but work here. And the ramifications of that are enormous. It's a wonderful thing if you can get people that live in your community and work here, too. So I don't want to go on too much longer, other than to say that, you know, this is good data here, you know, let's everybody kind of roll up our sleeves and make this work to our benefit.
Ms. McDonald? First of all, thank you, and thank you for your hard work on this, for the many hours you've spent with us and with the public. And I want to thank staff, and I want to thank the people who participated. I did attend some of those workshops, and there were a lot of people there and very engaged in the process, and it really did make a difference. I think that this type of study gets put on a shelf only if we let it get put on a shelf. And so it's a matter of us being engaged and continue to work on it. We've tried many things over the years. I can't count how many times we've looked at Old Town and rebranded it. So, well, one day, we're going to find what works. You know, we went through quite an exercise of trying to form a business district with the city leading the way and paying the prize. Maybe at that point in time, they just didn't have the right mix of people, and maybe that has changed. So it's not like you don't try it again. Timing is everything in life. And so you can't say, we tried it once, we're going to forget it. So that goes back to your flexibility. You have to be willing to change with the times and try different things. I also think that everything in life, one of the most important words is balance. We have to continue to be a balanced community. What we have now, unfortunately, is so many people who live here who can't work here because they don't have the good-paying jobs. When you look at the statistics and the numbers, you see those people driving out of town every morning to go to work, and a lot of people driving into town, but those are mostly those service jobs and the jobs that aren't the higher paying. And that's one of the pieces I would really like to see us work on. How do we bring those, more of those good-paying jobs and make sure we keep the ones that we have? I am all for letting staff begin this, see where we go with it, give it a shot, begin to take this document and now put it into action. If sometime we can come up and they, we decide now it's a time to take that next step, the individual that we had on staff was good for it to happen, but that method is long gone. And so to just say, oh, we need another one of those, I think would be totally inappropriate. But I think we have to be open, and I think it has to be something that we're all committed to doing. So with that, I certainly can support adopting it, but again, not putting it on the shelf. I don't know if I'm going to say to you every three months, you've got to come back with this, this, and this. But I would expect for you to keep on it and to keep us informed and keep us engaged so that we can be a part of engaging the community. Because if we can be as engaged as we want, but if we can't bring the businesses in and the community in to work with us, it's not going to do any of us any good. So it really is getting out there and working with our community and letting them know that we care and we want to make it a good community. You can't just give away money, but what we have to do is work with people so they can generate their own money and help them get started. And I think that's one of the best things I've heard, is how do we get them going? So I won't go on and on and on, because I know we're going to have more chances to talk about this as we go along. But again, I thank you and am full support of adopting it and getting going on it.
Mr. Morton?
You know, and listening to you this evening and looking at all those points and looking at a lot of points you verify that we're doing right now, many points. Streamlining permit process, that's what people keep saying, how come you got through your place so fast and so well? Because we streamlined it a long time ago. To get, you have your permit here, you have your business. Anyway, they're all in one spot. You get it fast, faster than most cities. The acting to provide worker housing. Well, that's what we're doing this evening, part of it. We're trying to do that to make sure we do have housing for our workers in our city. We're doing a good mix. You also recognize that we've attracted, over the years, we've attracted high-tech and biotech industries. You didn't even know that, but they're here, and there's a lot of them, and more, I'm sure more will come. We occasionally visit these different industries. That's how we know we're a place that makes satellites, one that, you know, goes on and on, that you don't even know is there. on, that you don't even know is there. But I'm glad you recognize that, because we've been working hard. And looking in the past, just for a moment, without hiring someone to do all this, how do you think the 3M and the wheelchair company got here? They're not here any longer. Those two are the biggest industries we had. George Longo, a private individual, part of Chamber of Commerce, invited them and brought them here. He was one of those responsible for bringing them. And they were here for a long time, but things change, and that's what we've been getting other industries. We also had the factory outlet mall. That was going to be a little dinky center and a bunch of R&amp;D. No. I mean, there's a bunch of us, the council said, "No, that should be a big commercial area, because you're out, you're way, out of everybody's way." Well, finally, we had someone come and said they want to do the factory outlet mall. Hallelujah, we got that done. CSUCI, one of our biggest supporters, one of our biggest industries, because it does make a lot of money for the city. There are three of us here who fought to bring that here. That was going to be a prison. We saw the drawings of the prison. That's when we got busy and formed a huge committee and worked like crazy, and that's city council doing it, not someone paid, to bring the university here. And I think everybody's proud of that university. Another example is, like, this past week, I met with John and met a person who owned a motorcycle manufacturing company out at the airport. They want to, may come to town and open up a business manufacturing motorcycles. Well, these are just some of the things that we do do here, and I think we're going to continue acting that way and bringing industries into town. John calls a lot, a lot of people. And if someone else, if the mayor's not busy, he calls me, "Is Mike going to go out and meet these people?" And so, it's a very, we have a lot of good things coming, okay? I don't want to say that we're going to grow past out in our farm lane, because we're not going to do that. This city's not going to do that. It's going to stay right inside of the city and just infill, and that's it. But thank you for all the rest that you gave us. That's what, let you know, I appreciate all the things I heard that you recognize we are doing. That's it.
And I just wanted to make one quick comment that I meant to make, and it had to do with your comment earlier about not having detail. The report is, just the basic report, is forty-eight pages, very, very small print. If you need to wear glasses, you have to go, you know. I'm actually the opposite, but it, there's, is a lot of detail in it. Does it have the answer to everything? No, but it's a good roadmap to get us going.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Tremblay.
One more comment, and Mrs. McDonald, I did want to respond to you on this, because I realize I'm a party of one on this particular topic, and I'm used to that. But anyway, you know, when I talked about a full-time economic development coordinator, I think the individual who was here in the 1980s did a remarkably good job, and he was excellent, and, and that was by the standard at that time in 1980s. Today is totally different. It's a different model. I only introduced that concept because I want to talk about the concept of having a full-time professional economic development person here in the city. You know, I won't give up on it. I realize I'm a party of one at this point. But it is so important, five, ten, twenty, thirty years from now, when none of us are up here or still around, that we do it. And I just happen to think that that, that is an approach. So, I was just trying to introduce the concept, not suggest that bringing somebody in and operating by 1980s standards was the appropriate way to go.
Well, the thing about being mayor is you get to speak last, according to our policies. So, just about everything's been said.
Yeah.
I do want to say that I think that Mr. Jevons, who was here in the 80s and worked --
In the 90s.
And early 90s, worked twenty hours a week, did a good job. And he did a good job by 80s standards and 90s standards, and he brought a lot of, he had a lot of contacts. He'd been the manager at, one of the managers at 3M, and he was a former president of the Chamber of Commerce. And he did a good job for us, so I don't want to let anybody think that I, at least, are putting down what he did, because I think that, that he did a good job. So, I, I have nothing to add to what all of you have said. I think that it's an excellent report, and thank you for doing it for us, and thank you, Mr. Clifford, for being the one who's going to make sure that it's not sitting on anybody's shelf, and that you will continue to let us know, maybe not all ten things quarterly, but at least somehow monthly, let us know what's happening.
That's the report.
Yeah. And with that, I just need to say that we have two different things in, on the agenda, and one is to consider approving the, adopting it, and the other one is to authorize the city manager to finalize and publish it, and so maybe we can condit, can combine adoption and the other.
Do you like the motion?
Yes.
I would move to authorize the city manager to finalize and publish the Economic Development Strategic Plan and undertake initial implementation actions as suggested.
And does that include the city council adopt?
Oh, okay.
No?
Well, I can add that.
I don't think he's going to publish it till we --
We authorize him to finalize it and publish it. You want us to adopt it tonight as well, or do you want to wait till you publish it?
No, let's have the council adopt it so we can get over that and then go ahead and publish it and move on.
Afterwards, okay. Then, that's not the way it's written, but I will add that to the end, and I will say that, first of all, begin my sentence with, "I move that the city council adopt the plan and authorize the city manager to finalize and publish," et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion a second? Is there further discussion? Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we're going to go back to new business oral communications, which I believe is the only thing that we had to drop at the end of the first session. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor. In front of you, you have a flyer for the Seventh Annual Camarillo Emergency Expo, which will be occurring on Saturday, September 22nd, in Constitution Park, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's going to be a lot of vendors, a kid's zone and food. There, there will be CPR and AED demonstrations, a lot of information about how to prepare for an emergency, and also for the first 300 visitors who visit eight of the expo booths, a free hydration backpack. So, there's your incentive to get informed about how to prepare for an emergency. So, again, that's September 22nd in Constitution Park from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney?
I have no items.
Okay, I'm going to start with Mr. Morgan.
Okay, we, we had a Vietnam, Vietnam ad hoc committee at City Hall, which we're getting toward the end now, and we're seeing all the drawings and all the things that are going to happen, and, and some of the programs we were sitting up at that meeting. I'll let Charlotte finish that up, because she was with me. Concerts in the park. I got to tell you, I didn't think I was going to like this, what was it, Freak, what do they call it?
Oh, you're going to like it.
Super Freak. Super Freak was fantastic, but this one that we, we have every year, I'm sorry, I did Super Freak last time, but this one we had this time was a chamber, chamber orchestra. We didn't have any ducks fly over this year, but they were fantastic. I mean, the music, it was interesting, because they were educational. They showed in the background pictures of the people, of the things that were going on, for that music, what it represented. So, you'd know that was a good calling, and this was that calling. So, very educational and fun to listen to if you like, if you like classical music, which I do, and very good. Streets and Transportation Committee meeting, Kevin and I met this week, or not this week, last week, and we'll go over that a little bit. Business presentation, I went to a business presentation, I was telling you about earlier, of a group that John contacted, and they want to put a motorcycle, motor scooter business here, manufacture here. So, we gave them the book of everything we could do for them, everything, and hooked them up with EDC, EDCVC, because they have some loan programs that could help them out, a lot of things that we really get, tried to convince them best we could. Even the gentleman that's going to be doing the, his group is going to be doing the financing was there. So, hopefully, those bikes look great, and hopefully, it'll, it'll turn out to be another business moving this way. Again, that's the way we do things here. We bring them here. Okay, saving lives, went to the saving lives program. Of course, that's where our commander and I are part of that, saving lives with Rabbi Lang. It's, it's kids, you know, trying to get kids away from drugs and making sure we don't get to drugs. Again, we're working on that lockbox and a few other things, so it'll come to you here soon when we're ready to move. Food Truck Festival at the ranch. Mr. Lormer was truck parked in front of the door handing out things like he usually does. The, the people on the board, on the foundation board, usually park on the inside on the left. Well, I pulled to park, and it wasn't the city council, it was a foundation board member. I was there to work. And, and he said, "No, nobody's going to come in." I said, "Okay." I drove around the backside where everybody else is and parked, and parked a lot with all offices, and walked in the back, back way. So, I don't know what he's talking about. I hadn't the faintest idea, but that's Lormer. Anyway, it was a truck, that truck show or truck festival was fantastic.
Throwback Thursday.
Huh? Throwback Thursday, that's exactly. That Throwback Thursday event is being, is good every time. You know how many people we're getting from out of town? They are, they're promoting this in Canal Valley. We get a lot of people from Newbury Park and the Canal Valley there. And, and music, very good. It wasn't as big as last time, but it was very, very well-attended. So, again, try to make the next one, folks, it's a lot of fun. That's it, Your Honor.
Which way are you going? No, Mrs. McDonald.
Which way are you going? On the list of meetings, the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District Needs Assessment Liaison Committee, we met with them, Mr. Tremblay and I, last week, I believe it was. It was after we've, the council met. We basically let them know what our discussion was, and the plan now is, is they will take it to their board, and their board will adopt, accept the, the plan, and it was basically two is the option that we favored, the option they favored. Now, once they take that step, then they're --
Option number two.
Option number two. I say call it plan, option two. And so, then there, after that, there needs to be a discussion, that's what everybody favors, now how do you make it happen? And so, that, I guess the best thing to say is to be continued. Maybe Mr. Tremblay has some more to say about that when we get to him.
Let's hope it doesn't go as long as some of these other things we've talked about tonight.
Well, with this one, obviously, it's the money, and that's going to be the, the key to figuring out what to do, and they've got to come up with what they feel they can contribute to the project. And the city already has had a discussion on, on potentially what the city could contribute. So, we're going to have to put all that together and figure out how to make something happen. I want to comment on the concert in the park and the orchestra. This was done by the Channel Islands Chamber Orchestra, and they augmented their normal size by some more professionals that they hired, and they had forty-nine members to that orchestra on, on the stage. And something that they had written just for us, it was something to teach. If you liked classical music to begin with, you liked it, because you like that kind of music.
You loved it.
But hopefully, people came away realizing that classical music really isn't scary. It's really something to like and to enjoy. And I want to thank John Thomas and, and his staff, I guess it was Tom that helped you, putting together and helping them so that they could do the screen in the back. So, when they were showing the public that The Simpsons theme song is classical music, you got to see the picture of, of The Simpsons. When they were doing, you know, the dance with fairies or whatever, there were fairies dancing. So, I thank you, to John and to Tom, the city staff that helped them do that. It really made a difference. Someone told me about, they had a little boy who was four, who was sitting, they were afraid to bring him. By the time he was done, he had two straws in his hand, and he was leading the orchestra. That's what it's all about, because that child may now, you know, something triggered in him that he was, he really liked music. So, I thank everyone that was a part of that one. And a reminder that summer is, is almost over, but summer is not over until Elvis is here and then leaves the park. So, he will be here Saturday night, and that will finish off the season, and he has been coming for many, many years. Some people say, "Why every year?" Well, because every year, he fills the park, and it's just become a tradition.
I think it's overfill.
Overfill the park, yes. So, with that, I just want to give a plug, and I don't know if you're going to do it, Madam Mayor, but tomorrow is your State of the City, and we look forward to that. It's probably all sold out, so I'm not sure anyone can get tickets, but you might let --
I'm not sure that people want to pay to come here me.
But you or the city manager might let people know also how they're going to be able to see it. I believe you're taping it?
Yes.
So, let them know that they will be able to watch sometime.
That's correct. The mayor's speech tomorrow will be taped live, and then it will be rebroadcast on our city website and also on the government channel. I'll put out a Facebook post once we have that posted, so people can link to it, and they'll be able to see it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Kildee?
Yes, I did attend a meeting with Mr. Morgan, Streets and Transportation, and as we were driving by tonight on the old fire station, I noticed that the driveway there could use a little help, a little sweep. It seemed like there was a lot of debris that's fallen off the trees there, so maybe you can have some of your staff look at it and see if they can go by and just give it a little, a little sweep there. And with that, that's all I have.
Mr. Tremblay?
So, a couple of, a couple of meetings on August 29th and August 31st for several hours, together with the CFO, the COO, and the Chair of the Finance Committee for Clean Power Alliance, we interviewed candidates for finance manager. And I think we'll be, hopefully, bringing back a recommendation to the full Clean Power Board in the next couple of weeks, so I'm, I'm pleased with the way those interviews went. Goodness knows, we spent enough time in study session tonight talking about the default tiers, and our city residents need to know that, that this is coming. On August 30th, we, Mrs. McDonald already covered the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District and the City Needs Assessment Committee meeting. I know that, I would just add that I think Mr. Norman and Mr. Vok are actually going to that meeting tomorrow evening, correct?
No, not tomorrow evening. That, that meeting is a special meeting. That's going to be on the 19th.
Thank you.
So, we will be assisting their board with how to move forward in the process. On the 26th, we'll have the item back on our agenda, and Mary Otten will be coming back for a repeat performance of her explanation of the plan that their board has adopted.
Right. And that's coming back to the city council on the 26th, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to our robust discussion on that evening.
It will be limited to the one they're planning to, that they adopted?
Well, I have a feeling that it, yeah, I mean, if we're talking about Plan Two, I think the, you know, the, the elephant in the room is how it's going to get paid for. So, I'm looking forward to a discussion here on how it's going to get paid for, so. So, those are the meetings that I've attended. I would ask that the council consider adjourning this evening in memory of Senator John McCain, who, Senator John McCain, who for me was a personal hero most of my life. I think his life is a testimony to the concept of public service, to robust but civil discourse, to bipartisan communication, and just the concept that, that, you know, we, we, we serve something greater than ourselves. So, I don't know if we've ever done that in terms of adjourning in memory of a federal --
We usually do, and whoever council members ask to --
So, I would ask that we do that, we consider that.
I have one of those as well that I forgot about.
Okay, well, I'm going to go to Mr., because we keep jumping back to you.
That's fine.
Mr. Kildee?
I already, I've already done it.
You already did it. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I can go again if you like.
You were short, that was it. I'll do mine, and then I'll go back to Mrs. McDonald. I attended two ribbon cuttings, and the one this morning was very interesting. It was the refurbished Vons in Mission Oaks, and what I particularly liked about it is they worked with the Historical Society, and they have twelve very large historical pictures of Camarillo up on their walls, and they're trying to make it as local as they can, and it was, it was really neat. Many years ago, I attended the refresh of the one on Arneel, and after that, the people on Arneel were newly trained and energetic, and I hope that you people in Mission Oaks get as good a service as we did.
They've enlarged the Starbucks.
Yes, they have. And she said that over the weekend -- And she said that over the weekend, in two days, they did, even with construction going on, this was noted, they did $12,000 worth a day in produce.
In produce?
Produce.
Really?
Yeah. That Vons is actually one of the busiest in the state of California.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they said. Well, I also attended a Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency meeting all last Wednesday afternoon, and the Vietnam Veterans Committee meeting last week on Friday. The memorial is going to be very nice. I think we've already looked at the pictures of it, but it will be dedicated along with the final program of our three years of programs to thank Vietnam veterans for what they've, their service to the country. We will also be dedicating this veterans' memorial, which will be behind the current monument on the corner in Constitution Park, and that memorial will list by war, everybody from this area who has died in a war. We couldn't find anybody from World War I, so it will list the names from World War II, the Korean Conflict, Vietnam, and the Gulf Wars. So I think it's, I'm inviting everybody to come and be with us November 10th at 10 o'clock in Constitution Park. I, too, would like to close in the memory of a couple people. One is Carolyn Kraus. Carolyn Kraus had moved to Prescott, Arizona, but she lived in Camarillo for many years. The notable thing, I think, for as far as the city goes, is that she spent 8,800 hours on the citizens' patrol.
Amazing.
Yeah, that's a lot of hours that she donated to our city, and I'd like to adjourn in her memory when we do adjourn. And I'd also like to adjourn in the memory of former county supervisor Judy Michael. She didn't represent us, but a good, good many of our residents work at Naval Base Ventura County. And Judy Michael was the vice, the co-chair of Regional Defense Partnership for eight years, the eight years she was on the Board of Supervisors, and she also was president of the Southwest Defense Alliance for two years, and she spent all her eight years on that Southwest Defense Alliance. She was the spark plug for that, to really get it going. And I think it's significant, because Regional Defense Partnership is the group that goes and lobbies and lobbies and lobbies to not just retain tenant activities out at that base, but to bring more in. And I believe that base is pretty much safe from being cut in a brack, because there are more than 90 tenant activities that are very, very large. It's a unique base. It isn't a one thing base. So it's, it's really, I would like to adjourn in Judy Michael's memory as well.
I have one more.
Yes.
And this is a gentleman who you all will know as soon as I say his name, but he is somebody who, who wasn't afraid to tell us what he thought, and that's Don Hollingsworth. And any of you who are on the Airport Authority, who have ever dealt with the airport out there.
Or here.
Or here. That man loved airplanes and anything airplanes. And, as again, he sometimes, you know, he wasn't afraid to tell us what he thought, but his heart was always with those, with flying and those airplanes. And in reading his, his bit where in the paper, it was really cute, it was either, it must have been his great-grandchild called him Grandpa Airplane.
Yes, yes.
I read that, and I thought, oh, you know, that's, that's really him. It's just exactly him. So he did a lot for that, our airport, and so I would appreciate if we could do that as well.
Okay, so we have finished our, our open business. We still have a closed session on a significant exposure to litigation, and we have a closed session for evaluations of city manager and city attorney, and I doubt that we'll have any announcements at the end of these sessions.
Hopefully not.
So with that, we will recess to closed session.